Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.
30 on Monday, August 15th, 2022. Does anybody have a conflict of interest with anything shown on the agenda?
No.
No.
We have minutes from August 1st, our last meeting. Entertain a motion to accept them.
So moved.
Moved by Tony. Second by Joe. Any discussion? Anybody see any corrections or things? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, 5-0-0. We have some warrants. Why don't I do these first? I have a payroll warrant, number 3A. This is for the delinquent tax collector for his fee. It is for $1,660.09.
Good money. So moved.
Moved by Tony. Second by Joe. Any discussion? So carried, all those favored say aye.
Aye.
So carried, 5-0-0. Another payroll warrant. This is payroll warrant number 3, for a total of $25,989.37.
So moved.
Moved by Tony.
Second.
Second by Joe. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, 5-0-0. It would certainly help if we had a master electrician here, wouldn't it? How many?
Yeah, I know. We have more Green Mountain Power bills.
Okay, I have check warrant. I have to put glue on that.
Dying now.
Why is it I can't find the check warrant? Check warrant, there it is. Check warrant number 4, for $72,239.95.
So moved.
Moved by Tony.
Second.
Second by Joe. Items more than 1,000? Blue Cross Blue Shield of Vermont, $6,844. Bennington County Regional Commission, $10,345. Gravel out of Creek. Creek gravel land development, $1,096. That must be out of White Creek.
Yeah, yeah.
How much? $1,096. Must be they used it for fill or something.
Yeah.
GA Boof Fuel, $1,294. Innovative Surface Solutions, as for chloride, $4,906. RCS Solutions, $1,009. Tamarack Tree Care, $2,600.
It's being reimbursed by the Historical Society. There's a large tree falling from their property over the cemetery. We removed it as a hazard tree.
Okay, thank you. Weaver Construction, $29,995. That probably is for, for both of them or just?
That's just for one. That's West Mountain and Blueberry Hill. And we're reimbursed 80% of that by the state.
That's it. Any discussion?
That was the grant that reimbursed?
Yeah, that's one of the grants we have going, man.
Any more discussion?
No, thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, 5-0-0. Announcements, there's the usual plea for DRB and PC board members. We're running just on the minimum amount. And it's only fair to the citizens that apply for a permit or something like that to have a full board. So please, keep looking at that. Anybody else have any?
I just wanted to say, we had a beautiful Town of Bennington Battle Day Parade and a lot of our Shasberry folks participated. We had our fire trucks there and some of our scouts. It was a really lovely day, so thanks for everybody who participated and made it a real spectacular parade. And the Norshaft Lions as well, so.
Thank you. Anybody else? Public comments. There's nobody here, but is there anybody on Zoom that wishes to make a comment?
We have no hands raised, no.
Okay. Melanie?
Hi, everybody. Hello. This is not going to tell you much. We're just going to look at it real, real quick because there's hardly anything going on. If we look at the reserve funds, you can see the only thing that's happening is one water payment for $300. That's the only thing that's happened in August. If we look at the cash flow, you can see some kind of normal things. I think the biggest thing that we'll see is a pretty significant delinquent tax payment, which I think I may have mentioned it last time. It has, it's got some of the state money that has brought our delinquent tax levels down, about as low as I've ever seen for this time of year, which is very heartening. That's probably the last fairly large one we will get before the new delinquent tax list will be generated after the due date. Taxes are due November 10th. They are, is the cash flow coming, Dave? Do you want to do the cash?
Yeah, you want to do the cash?
Yeah, let me just, I'll just do it real quick.
You're good.
I think the only thing that's significant is the delinquent taxes that I just talked about.
It's coming.
It's going to be so anticlimactic when we see it. But anyway, yeah, so.
Wow.
Yeah, that cemetery number is quite high. That was, I think, a whole bunch of plots got sold connected to one.
One family, a large number of them sold.
And then, let's see.
And then the delinquent taxes, which is a lot.
Yeah, that's, as I say, that's probably the last significant one we'll get.
And is that through the program that?
Some of it is. It's a mixture.
Okay.
When I get it from Mert, he doesn't break it down, so that's just what he.
What he's collecting.
He breaks it down by the parcel, but not by the form of payment.
I see, okay.
Does the check, doesn't go to him, does it?
The way, the way it works with us is Mert does the collections himself, does all the paperwork. He doesn't use our system. And then he writes us a check for the full amount that he has received. Then we turn around and pay him back.
Pay him his fee.
Yeah. It's a little convoluted, but that's partly because he doesn't use Nemrick, which.
I was asking about what the state, when the state makes a payment.
When the state payment, it goes directly to Mert.
To Mert.
And then he does the same magic because part of that is penalty and interest.
Okay.
So he just does the accounting for it and turns around.
It's interesting, he goes to the tax collector.
Yeah, yeah. So if you look down, you'll see our cash position is pretty good for this time of year. As I keep saying, we're not going to need a line of credit, which, a little tiny bit more, Dave?
Uh-uh. Sorry, there we go, sorry.
There we go. There's our cash bills. So that's, that's a good place to be this time of year. And the tax bills are printed. I have stuffed all of A and part of B. I hope to get them out either late this week or early next week. And you guys are all sick of hearing me say this, but when you get your tax bill, please, please open it and look at it and see if it makes sense. You have a limited amount of time to correct mistakes that are either yours or somebody else's, your accountant's. The biggest mistake is people don't look to see whether their homestead declaration went through. You still have time, if it didn't, to correct that problem, but please don't just throw your tax bill aside or don't throw it out because you've got an escrow account. Please open it and look at it. That's, if you only hear me say one thing all year, that's the thing to do. Read your tax bill and call me if it looks weird. Anyway, so they are, they're printed, they're ready to go. People should be, should receive them by September 1st and they are due November 10th. Any questions about any of that?
I just, I couldn't find it on my calendar. What is, what day of the week is November 10th?
I think it's a Thursday this.
I can tell you.
Yeah. Do it 5:00 PM.
Thursday.
Thursday.
Thursday, November 10th.
Yes, and they do it 5:00 PM. And my box is available 24/7, but I will check it for the last time at 5 o'clock. And if it's not there, I will move it. Anything else?
Anybody else have any questions or concerns?
Okay, I gotta go take a birthday cake out of the pants.
Thank you.
Good luck. Thank you, Melanie.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a report on our landfill.
On the landfill. Last week, we had a failure of the exhaust system at the landfill. It appears after we went through the system that when we had that large electrical storm, the breaker went out towards, up by the fan. The breakers also went out down at the landfill too, so we're kind of assuming it was the same kind of strike in the neighborhood that knocked them all out. Contacted the state immediately. I've been in contact with them for the last week on this. When we powered it back up, the fan was obviously not functioning correctly. It's not working the way it used to. It sounds like it's burning out. I've been listening to it for quite a number of years now and as soon as we got it back running, and then a neighbor told me that, oh yeah, it's been making a strange noise for a few weeks now. Well, you know, so now we're, we know, the problem being that this was crafted here. It's basically the fan is all, all the components are inside an inverted five gallon bucket that none of us know what's in it. So, and it's an explosive gas, which reads fairly high at that part. It's not a danger when you're there. I test it all the time, but we need to have it replaced correctly. The system's up and functioning. At no point were any of the measurements at the border past the 0% mark. They did drop to zero at the vent, which is way, way below its normal amount. But as soon as we were able to restart the fan safely, it's venting correctly. It was venting correctly again today. So, as I said, I've been in touch with the state and we measured it and monitored it all weekend. It's been running now back again for five days in a row, but it clearly has an issue. Was talking with the state and our electrician Hathaway, and we were looking at things and we just have no way of knowing how this was cobbled together and we have no way of replacing it. So the state has recommended a couple of engineers. I'm going to check locally for anyone who has experience in this because we need someone to either design a new one or find us the right way to replace this or the piece of equipment we need to replace it and how to do it safely as it's venting an explosive gas. So I'm just going to ask the board for permission to go forward and it's going to cost some money, but the last one that was designed, it has lasted since it's been closed. It's a very well-regarded system designed by the state. It's just this piece, which eventually was going to break, isn't done yet and we can't wait for it to go down because then we could potentially get into real expenses. Wouldn't be a problem, but we would have to pay a lot of money for someone to come with an expensive piece of temporary equipment to continue venting. So, you know, we want to get ahead of the curve here, so I don't even know what it's going to cost, but I need to spend the money. I can advise you at the next meeting. I have to get in touch. I don't know if I need engineers down here. If you look, like we were looking, everything is for a much bigger system. So something, we have to find something crafted for a very small.
Right. Do we know who created this system?
Bill Pennebaker, designed the entire system.
Okay, and is now deceased, so we have no ability to. Have we tried to reach out to Patty Rootkins, his daughter, to just see if there was? Okay.
Anything his family tells is not.
Well, he was very meticulous with his notes.
We couldn't even use that.
Okay.
Because we need someone to certify that we're doing it correctly.
Okay.
I mean, that's the bottom line.
Yeah.
It's a great job. It lasted, for an inverted paint can, it lasted a long time.
Right.
So you're saying the motor's gone, the electric's gone.
Yeah, yeah.
So why don't we rebuild it or replace it?
Because it's an explosive gas, there's all kinds of rules and regulations around it.
So you can't maintain the motor?
We don't know what's in it. And frankly, we're not in a position to even remove it to find out. Because, you know, the electrician doesn't want to touch it because he doesn't want to be responsible for igniting something. I don't want to remove it because I don't want to be responsible for igniting something either. So these motors, and I'm sure he did it, it's like.
If you de-energize the system, you're not going to do anything.
Joe, I don't, I'm not going to do it.
I know, I know.
If you're going to authorize someone to go up and play with explosive gas, then you go ahead, but I'm not going to have anything to do with it. And OSHA will be all over us. So I think it's just something, we have to get the right people, the right players to come do it. The electrician doesn't want to do it, I don't want to do it. And the motor in there is a motor that's designed, just like my monitor is, that it's designed to be in an explosive environment. And I don't know how you build something to be like that, but that's how I can go up and measure this gas with a running battery pack. So we need the same thing, whatever that's made of, however that's built, that's what we need on top of this thing. And it has to be a lot smaller than anything we've seen anywhere. And they must be there, but we don't know where they are and we don't know how they go in. And the electrician was questioning, you know, we're updating something that's been there for like 20 years. Is the electrical needs going to be the same? Are we going to have to rewire all the way back to the hut where the main breaker box is? Because this was just a UFI box underneath the fan itself on the post in the middle of the field. The main breakers were over in a different hut. So is the electric draw going to be the same? Is it even up to today's code? Or what are the new rules on methane venting? You know, it was just.
So this can open up a whole can of worms.
Oh, yeah. Oh, absolutely, yeah.
So whatever the cost is, we can safely say times five, once you involve the state, what they want done.
Yeah, whatever, whatever is the current standard for replacing this stuff is what it's going to be.
But you were telling me there's a fund.
Well, we can have the host town tax money, which is sitting there. That was from TAM to when the landfill was closed and from when they got their permit to operate their transfer station. That money is available for different usages around Airport Road and that. You know, I don't want to put too big a price tag on this. This could be like $5,000. If you go to the right people, and the state has recommended a couple of engineers that they know deal with these systems. I mean, it could be just calling the right person and then going, you're looking for a model XJ15 from this little manufacturer in Indiana, and I call Hathaway and say, you're looking for a model XJ15, and it comes with the instruction pad and you unscrew the top and put it on and power it up again. It could be that simple. Or it could be not so simple. But I do know that the state is very pleased with the system as designed, so it's not going to turn into any huge thing. It's just the motor's gone. It's going, it's clearly going.
Well, let's find out what we're up against.
Yeah, that's what I want. I just want, you know, to let the board know that, you know, money has to be expended here and I have to get it moving. Because if it breaks, then we have a bigger expense. It did kind of, when it dropped to zero at the vent, was kind of interesting because nothing was coming up then.
I guess, just to clarify to people, this is actually drawing methane out of the, out of the landfill.
Out of the landfill, right.
If we didn't, it would migrate to the edges.
Yeah.
We got neighbors.
Right, we don't want that.
And the vents where it could come up and be, come up to neighbors. So we're forcefully drawing it to the center.
There's also running, people driving in and out of the transfer station with engines running, right?
No, you know, the thing about methane too is once it's vented into the air, its ability, its explosive ability drops really, really quickly.
And it has to be concentrated.
Yeah, and there's not, there's nothing around there. It's really, it is, it's confined space gas where it becomes dangerous. But when you're working over the confined space, which is the tube coming up into the blower, that's where you could have, and we usually run at a very high level. So caution is worthwhile.
Do you want a motion or just consensus?
I think a consensus and I'll come back the next meeting if it's anything under, you know, 5,000 or so. I'm definitely going to go ahead with the engineer to get that started. We'll come up with numbers for the next time. Like I said, Joe, it could be, you know, okay, we'll drive down, look at it, this is what you need. Here, call my electrician. This is A, B, C, E, D, and that's the end of it. Could be, hoping. You know, I'm hoping it doesn't turn into some free ring circus over it. But it has to be done so that we can all sit back and check the boxes that's been done according to all the regulations and everything else, none of which I know. And it's just important that in the end of the game, because this is a state-regulated site. And, you know, that's why I've been on the phone with them or emailing them all week, every day, giving them numbers and what's going on.
Does the state have anybody that's savvy with this at all?
They've made recommendations, but they won't be involved in fixing it at all. They'll want it to meet their standards, but they won't, they've recommended engineers to, for me to go to.
Yeah.
Yeah, because, yeah, that's kind of the name of the game. And in a way, you know.
You're right, you're right.
Yeah, yeah, and you're kind of out there and you'd have to figure your own way. Given the small number of them, it actually probably doesn't make sense for the state to have somebody like that on anyway, but like I said, it could be, it could be people in the business know that there's hundreds of these spread around the country and they use this type of fan. So go buy one and, you know, put it in. And for an experienced electrician, it could be, yeah, I mean, we de-energize the main box and then, you know, let it vent itself out to it goes back to zero again, which took about 48 hours. And then you can put the thing on, power it all back up again, and you're in business. You know, but I'm sure there's Form A through D at least that have to be filled out while we do this. So it's just the way it is.
Well, you have to have some sort of genealogy for the state. I'm sure they would want that.
Yeah, yeah.
Consensus, everybody?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And I'll bring you the numbers next time around. Just like I said, hopefully, well, I don't know. I'm hoping it won't be much, but.
Well.
That's why I'm letting you know in advance, in case.
Well, it's one of those things, you know, it could be cheap, but it could be not so cheap.
Yeah, well, it's this, you know, it's like a lot of the materials we have to deal with.
When you mention the state, that's one I see dollar signs.
Yeah, yeah, and we run this under a license and a permit from the state.
Yeah.
And so it has to match what they want us to do.
Okay. Sidewalk scoping study on Granview Street.
Yeah, these two, the next two are just really an update on where we are with these. We had a kickoff meeting with the engineers last week, myself, our engineer and the two state engineers. Well, the VCRC, who's the municipal project manager for us, is VCRC, and the engineer from the state. We are going to start providing some documents, you know, just some background documents to Dufrane or engineer. And we're planning on having a community meeting the second week in September. It'll probably be the Tuesday or Wednesday. I'm trying to get that scheduled now. It'll be probably 6:30 here and on Zoom, just for the engineer to kind of have an introductory meeting with the residents of the neighborhood and here are their concerns and what they actually are hoping to see come out of this.
What was it again, the second or third week you said?
The second week of September, either Tuesday or Wednesday.
Okay, the 13th is a planning commission, so it would have to be Wednesday.
That's one of the things I hadn't looked up yet.
September 14th?
14th looks like it'll probably be.
Okay, it's looking like it's positive, okay.
September 14th, okay. It would be here and on Zoom.
Here and we'll put it on Zoom too. And, you know, like I said, it's really an introductory. So the people in the neighborhood can see Christina from Dufrane, who's the engineer for the project, and just hear some of the interest in it.
And how are you going to let folks, is it just going to be like this or are you going to send a targeted?
I have a list of everyone who participated from the neighborhood and the initial things.
Okay.
So it's a little email list. I'll email them all directly and then we'll put it on our normal platforms so everybody can see it. And if I hit the 15 emails I have, it usually gets around the neighborhood pretty good.
Right.
Anyway, you know, that'll kick it off and then we'll get into the real nuts and bolts of it and see where we go with it.
Sewer?
The sewer is just an update of where we are with that. The application is in. We notified them that Dufrane Engineering from Manchester was the company we chose. All the paperwork is into the state. What happens now is Dufrane makes up an engineering proposal and they send it up to the state. The state will take it. If we're approved, we're in the line for review. If we're approved, then the state just takes it right to the bond to get it paid for, which would be up to $150,000. It's no expense to the town. And when we get to that step, we'll have a lot more to say. Because once we know we're actually being funded, then we can go on quite a bit. But right now, it's just in the line to get approved. So everything's done with that, that can be, and.
Do we have a pretty good sense that we're a pretty good candidate for this or?
Yeah, but when I started back, whatever, in the spring, they had already allocated all of 22's money, fiscal '22.
Okay.
They said, get it in the beginning of July, you know, as soon as you can. And I notified them back in May that we were applying. So we're in a good, pretty good position.
Okay.
I understand the project was funded again for a year, but I don't know who else is in that pool.
Right, okay.
So we'll, we'll see as they evaluate who's who here. But we are in and if, I think it's one of these projects, because there's a lot of ARPA funds and the state has a lot of ARPA funds, that even if. ARPA funds and the state has a lot of ARPA funds, that even if it doesn't get done this year, we'll just slide right into the line for next year and we'd get funded next year. So, I mean, everything's there and Dufrane will do their part and we'll see what happens with it.
We have an animal control officer. We approved that our last meeting, Kelly.
Yep.
In the meantime, we talked to the Humane Society in Chastberry Second Chance and said, would you like to work with us if we get a dog? We could bring it up to you and you keep it for the number of days that's required and so on and so forth. And their response was?
No.
No. Probably saw that, that was sent around to you. So we have to decide what we're going to do. And one possibility is we build a little kennel up Department of Public Works someplace then, and that the Kelly, Kelly or the animal control officer would be in charge of cleaning it, making sure. We would build it according to specifications. Has to be on a slab, a concrete slab, so it can be cleaned and all that sort of stuff. But.
Yeah, you can basically buy kits for this. And, you know, this whole last year, we impounded one dog.
So this isn't a big thing, but we.
But we have to have it. And, and Second Chance's position is that by law, we have, we're responsible for the first five days. After the fifth day, we can euthanize the animal. And so after the fifth day, they're willing to take it.
Right.
But for the first.
If there's room.
If there's room, yes, which is a big conundrum to it.
Yeah.
But for the first five days, we're also obligated to have a place to hold a dog.
Right.
Nobody wants the liability. I went through this a couple of years ago with all the local kennels. Nobody wants to touch this stuff. So we can probably cobble something together. Like I said, they come in kits. We're going to buy a kit that can hold up to two dogs and probably put a chain link fence around the kit so someone doesn't try and retrieve the dog in the middle of the night. It'll have to be somewhere within close proximity to power because we're going to have to heat it during the winter. And we won't need water or anything because the A C O will be, especially if there's an animal there, will be in charge of making sure it's fed and has water and things each day. And that's, we were actually paying our previous A C O for the same service and helped, but she had hers on her private property. Our new A C O really doesn't want it on her private property. I understand that. This way, when people come to redeem their dog and if, years prior, we haven't had the most cooperative people come to redeem their dogs, so they can come redeem it at the transfer station. They'll come pay everything here and then we'll arrange for someone to release the dog up there. Not something I was intending to do, but here we are and we, I don't really see any other option. Powell has theirs. They did the same thing. They have one down by their transfer station. I talked to Mike today about, let's find a 10 by 10 section where we can make this work.
How, how expensive are these kits?
It'll cost probably installed, be a few grand.
Okay.
Yeah, we're not going, we're not going crazy. But it does need electric, does need a cement base, does need proper shelter, a door, you know. We have to do it right. And part of Kelly, we paid our previous A C O quarterly, something like $350 to maintain the kennel and provide food and water for any dog that happened to come in. Probably some arrangement like that again, where instead of saying, when you have a dog, we'll pay you this much, we'll go the same arrangement we had with the previous A C O, except we'll all have the kennel and just say, here's quarterly stipend or payment. So when you have a dog, you have supplies, you just, your time to come up here and feed it and give it water and everything. I think that would work out well. I mean, the whole system we have now basically costs as much as we paid River Holes, a kennel, to rent space in their kennel every year. So we paid them over $6,000 a year for access to the kennel. So this is actually still cheaper than what we were doing.
Right.
So it's inconvenient, but like I said, we don't pound a lot of dogs. Most dogs that are found are returned real quickly.
So these are lost dogs?
Uh, it can be anything. It can be stray, it can be lost, it can be.
What about a rabid dog, possible?
A sick dog, we, we can take it into second chance. I believe we had that last year badly, what word can I use safely? But a badly ill dog, let's say that, that we did get right to second chance and they took care of and actually got it up for adoption. Nobody ever came for it. But an injured dog, you know, and that will have to be played by ear, you know? If you have an injured dog, we'll have to take a second chance so they can provide veterinary care for it. The town pays the veterinary care if it's not claimed after five days. And then after five days, depending on, you know, we get a medical opinion on from them what, what to do.
What's the process with a, with a dog bite and there's no proof of, of the rabies vaccination? Do we have to hold the dog?
Uh, no, we, 90% of the cases, the homeowner, the homeowner, the dog owner is asked to keep the dog confined for a five day period to see if it gets any.
So we don't have to.
We, we don't have to do that.
Okay.
And it's not to say we're not going to have a dog that has any one of, a number of contagious dog diseases, which it comes back to why we need power nearby and it'd be nice to have water nearby, but we can run a hose pretty far from the building, anywhere to hose the place off if we need to. Yeah, it's one of those things, like if anyone has a better idea, I'm open to suggest. You know, I don't know what else we're going to do with them. I really don't. Yeah. Hey?
Should have kept the old garage there.
Yeah, the old garage would have made a nice gloomy kennel, but yeah, we'll find someplace. It's hard to pick a place up there. You can't have it too close to the transfer station because it'll go nuts every time it's open. You can't have it at too many angles to the salt shed because it gets a little dusty. You can't have it really down below because it's very secluded. I, I don't know. We'll figure something out. Don't know what yet, but, and you don't want to go up back where the old trailer was because it's close to houses. In a way, it's an ideal place because it's, nobody's around it and it's also not such an ideal place. But it will prompt me to finally build the gate for the front to lock the place off and to install the, the security cameras we've been talking about because that should be upgraded anyway. So with the board's permission, I'm going to go ahead with under 5,000 and get this thing built.
Let's make that a motion.
I'll make a motion to provide the monies to build the dog kennel at the transfer station.
You want to put a limit?
I said 5,000 is.
5,000 should do it. I sincerely hope so.
We'll cap it at 5,000 then.
Okay. Second, by, uh, motion by Mike, second by Tony. Any, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried, 5-0-0.
Okay. And just to clarify, I'm looking for, I've seen like more kit that the crew will assemble where we decide to put it. And you can buy a pad or a pre, from right around the corner, actually, and just drop it down where we're going to do it and we'll just assemble it on the thing.
I think a tractor supply must have.
Yeah, they all do. Yeah, you can go crazy because there's some animal warehouses where they have, it's like, wow, this is quite luxurious. My dog doesn't live like this. I think we'll have pretty much the basic one because like I said, we're talking about on a bad year of five day occupancy, so, you know. But law says we have to have one.
So is Mike back from vacation?
Mike came back this morning and the road report basically is, you know, they had a lot of washouts from the storm, you know, so they've been working on that. The roads did hold up very well, but dirt roads and heavy downpours create ruts and things. So they've done a lot of work correcting that. We had a couple of driveway issues we've been looking at, help people with culverts, correct some of those problems. And that's the only effort because he just got back. He and I are meeting this week because we have, you know, quite a pile of grants, you know, that are going out through December of 2024 that we're trying to schedule, you know, which ones we're going to do, when, we match the class three road funds, the paving funds, so, because we have other ones in process that we hope to get also. So we're, we're trying to juggle a schedule here so that we can line everybody up correctly. So not much to report this week, but it's August and vacation time and they're just taking care of the usual problems that crop up.
So the big question is, where's the mower?
Where's the mower?
Right, 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 right.
Yeah, where is the mower? The mower is sitting in two pieces still in sale.
Still.
So I'm going to talk to Mike about that. We're meeting Wednesday. I was thinking of driving over there and just saying, show me the mower and show me why A doesn't fit into B, because we ordered A to fit into B and what's the deal? Because it's really.
Ridiculous.
It is, it is ridiculous and we have a lot to mow, but, you know, we're mid-August.
Yeah, I was going to say summer's almost over.
Yeah, but we still got to get all this mowed before we get, or we're going to have a mess in the spring.
Yeah.
So it's.
We don't get our mower, we're going to have a mess in the spring.
Yeah, yeah. And my only somewhat feeling better about it is the state still hasn't mowed most of the area either, so.
It just showed up.
Yeah, it just showed up, yeah. But we still don't have a clear cut answer to what's going on and it's quite frustrating.
Do we have a plan B as far as maybe go knock on another door for a mower?
Uh, if push comes to shove, we'll borrow another one as we can.
We borrowed Sunderland's for a while.
Yeah, we had Sunderland's for, for a week or so.
But they had to have it back.
Yeah, they, and they needed it back.
Of course.
Yeah. So, yeah, you kind of work with what you can. Yeah, I, I definitely for the next meeting, we're going to have some response from them other than we're working on it. Something, something was done wrong. I'm sorry, there's no two ways about it. This was ordered as a package. They wrote the specs for it. We told them what we wanted. We specked it out. They put it together and it said, A's supposed to go into B. Some, for some reason, they're sitting next to each other. It's.
Somebody got it wrong.
Somebody got something wrong. And being the way things are, getting the coupler to make it all work is probably backordered forever. So we need an explanation. I think it's time. Or pop that old thing off the end of your lot and give it to us for a month. Because, you know, we have $180,000, which we're already paying the loan on.
Yeah.
For what's sitting over there.
We haven't cut a blade of grass yet.
We haven't cut a blade of grass. In fact, we had to buy new blades for Sunderland's mower. So we hit a rock, so. So that helps. Uh, okay.
Other than that, I guess, is that the end of your?
Yeah, that's the end of DPW. I can go on to other business.
Okay.
Other business is, is the status of this meeting or the way we're doing it. Martha and I were talking about it earlier because I had a few people comment. I don't want to spend anywhere near what some other towns have spent for these systems, but I think we need to upgrade the microphones and the cameras, so I'm going to talk to a couple of people. When we first started, I had the two snowballs and they worked well together, then they began fighting each other. And I don't know why that is. It may be something in my laptop, which I run the meeting off of. But I'm going to find out from someone how we can get a couple more microphones on the desk and change the camera and just make it work a little bit better and get rid of all this cabling stuff that I have all over the place. Because it is a permanent part of it, but, you know, like I said, some towns are spending thousands and thousands of dollars on systems and I just really don't see the point in that.
Are you talking about wireless mics or?
I don't know. You know, I'll find somebody who knows this stuff, because I'm not going to pretend I do, and just say, I might even call up C C, you know, Cat TV and say, you know, what do you know about wiring something like this for, for a Zoom meeting? And it's, the technology is simple. If someone tells you what technology works with together. So, you know, it, it won't be much, but it'll improve this. Because I, I have gotten a couple of complaints, especially after the last meeting I was at. Apparently I'm not projecting to the back of the audience like I used to and people aren't hearing me because the mics changed a bit and the fans are on, which is probably causing some of it. But we also can't sit in this room without the fans on, so it won't be a big expense, but I, we do need to upgrade. It's here forever, so.
I was going to say, was this.
I'm looking through these.
Well, we're working on two different systems here. Cat TV is getting everything fine.
Okay.
But Zoom is having problems.
Snowball.
Off the snowball. So it's just a matter of getting, bringing out my other ones so they work together, which might need some kind of switch. This may not be able to do it. I might need to have something put in my laptop so that this all works. I mean, you know, I didn't buy a specific laptop to run Zoom meetings, so it might just be this isn't capable of doing it. So, you know, we'll find out and we'll just improve the experience for people at home so they can hear things, which is better for all, is actually.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't mind not being on camera, but they have to be able to hear me, so. And all, you know, I can certainly improve my $69 camera here and get, get something. Well, you know, they have systems that will start rotating to the sound of the voice.
Right.
Uh, you know, there's all kinds of things that we're getting into thousands and thousands of dollars, which I don't think we need. We need a nicer wide angle than this so everybody can be seen. And most importantly, better audio pickups. I mean, that's really what we're looking at.
Consensus, everybody?
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, I'll go ahead with that. The other thing is, we finally heard from the state on our wetlands delineation study, which I'm very, very disappointed with.
Uh-oh.
They never responded to our engineer, never sent a report back. And when I questioned them on it last week, they sent a brief email to our engineer stating that you never asked me a question and, you know, it's not something that you need an answer for, so basically go ahead and do it. And we were both like six months, we've been waiting for an answer, asking you over and over for something. So I do intend to complain to the state that, you know, a simple thing was sent in and if it didn't need the application, because you have to send the information in to find out if you have to do the whole application. And you just decide not to respond because you don't need to do the application. How were we to know that?
Right.
And when the engineer calls three times, emails multiple times and gets no response, and then I sent something in saying that, you know, frankly, I was going to go to the state representative about it, he gets an email saying, oh, you know, you can just go ahead and do it.
So this means then all the Howard Park improvements that we were waiting for can now just go through because?
Yep, we lost the entire building season.
Because we were waiting on this. Wow. Okay.
Yeah.
But that's good for Howard Park.
It's good for Howard Park, but I won't be able to get a contractor to do that until next year.
Until next year.
And that's a waste of a year. We could have had the entire park done already.
Right.
And so.
The environmental part of the state judicial system is bad.
Yeah, I was very disappointed.
Well, and also they think they're God for some reason. They just, they have unbelievable power.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very disappointed in, it was a simple, I mean, we were asking simple questions. What's this ask? Did you read it? Did you get it? Nothing. And only when, when I got on last week did we get a response that was like, well, you[1712.22] you know, you don't...
What's your problem?
Yeah, yeah, you didn't ask a question.
Yeah.
We sent you a whole application with attachments, pictures, diagrams, what did you think we sent it to you for? So, anyway.
Did you have something about a gun ordinance, or...
Gun ordinance, thank you, yes. We had an inquiry from a resident, he had gone to Fishing Game, I think he went to, about someone firing weapons in the village, and he was told that we were one of the few towns in the state that doesn't have an ordinance, which we do have an ordinance, it's a 45-year-old ordinance, so I'm going to have, rewrite it to bring it kind of up to date, because it still talks about the fire and light district, it's part of many of the ordinances and policies I've been trying to rewrite over the last couple of years. So, I'm going to rewrite this and try and get it in with the speed ordinance and the trail ordinance, but essentially it is, is saying you can't discharge firearms in the village district, the old fire and light district. And this gentleman was telling me that people were discharging shotguns in the district, and without a specific ordinance, because Vermont being one of the few states that doesn't have a law that says you can't discharge a firearm within X hundreds of feet of a residential dwelling, you need a local ordinance for it. So, I'm not surprised that over 45 years, this has dropped off the radar of the sheriffs and the state police and wildlife, so I'm going to just send an email with the old one attached to it, and we'll upgrade it. It doesn't really need to be changed, it's pretty straightforward, it says, "To promote the health and welfare of the residents of the Fire and Light District of the Town of Shasbury," which is basically today, the water district, "The discharge of firearms within the Fire and Light District of the Town of Shasbury is prohibited. Any violation of the foregoing ordinance is punishable by a fine of not to exceed $100." And it's pretty straightforward, it's a geographic boundary of the Fire and Light District, which is now the water district, and the part that we revised is probably the $100, which is not really much of a deterrent to anybody. So, it's really a matter of just a straight public safety, it's not really that controversial, and it would only apply in this, this immediate area. And like I said, most other states wouldn't allow it within several hundred feet of any residential dwelling. So, I'll rewrite this to, just to bring it up to date, write it by Merrill, and we'll do the same as every other ordinance, put it up, I'll try and get it back in time, so we can do it with the two traffic ordinances, and then, you know, it goes out if the board approves it, and then there's this 44-day period for someone to put in a petition to repeal it, you know, so we can go through those motions. But in the meantime, I will update the three law enforcement agencies in the area that we do have an ordinance, it's never been repealed, the wording doesn't nullify it, that still calls it the Power and Light District, so, because that is a historical reference to the area.
And the other business?
So, our next meeting is scheduled for Labor Day, and I'm assuming that we probably are not going to meet that day, September 5th, so I didn't know what we were planning to do for the next...
You should do the following day, right?
Yeah, we usually move it to the Tuesday, which is...
We have a Lions meeting that day, that's, we're back from recess, that's it.
That's up to the board.
But...
It would be a conflict for Martha and myself.
Oh, okay, uh, we could move it, well, we can't move it forward.
To the next Monday, you can't do that, because it's too long with payroll?
It's too, well, you know, what we could do, sorry, let me bring up my calendar here.
What, Wednesday?
I, I'm good on Wednesday, but...
Wednesday?
The seventh of September?
Only day we got, isn't it?
What we're going to have to do anyway, I guess we could do it Wednesday, because the week of the 28th, August, we're going to have to have a special meeting for bills.
Right, did you, yeah.
I was wondering about that.
So, yeah, if you just want to do it, well, we have to check, is DRB meet on the first Wednesday?
I don't know about DRB's schedule, I thought it was second and fourth, for some reason, it's like the planning commission, but it's on the Wednesday.
Yes, it is.
So...
You're right, Martha.
Okay, so we could say September 7th for a regular select board meeting.
Okay.
And we, what day would you like to have?
Quickie?
Oh, yeah, to pay the bills, we have to do that the last week of the month, the 28th, so it could be Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, well, it could be any day, Monday, Wednesday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, the first.
I've got to leave on Thursday, so I'd rather have it be Monday or Tuesday.
Yeah, Monday is, Tuesday would work.
Monday's two weeks from today, which would be the normal rotation, so why don't we do it on the 29th?
So, the 29th of August, and is that going to just be like one of...
Yes.
Just be bills.
The warrants, okay.
Yeah, just warrants.
Want to do that earlier?
That's completely up to you, it's up to the board, I would prefer it earlier.
What, what?
I get out at 3:30 from the state, so I...
Joe, what time works for you?
Pretty open after 4:00.
What time do you want to do it?
Uh, 4:00?
4:00 or 5:00?
4:00 I could do.
You could do 4:00, I could do 4:00.
I mean, I could, I'd probably pull on the, yeah, we could go for 4:00.
4:00? Would it work though, or 4:30?
It's going to be quick, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's just going to be paying warrants.
Yeah, I should be able to make it here for 4:00.
Okay.
Okay, so August 29th is at 4:00 PM, and then September 7th will be at our regular 6:30.
Wait, maybe the time on the 7th, yeah.
Okay. Perfect.
Okay, good.
That's all I got.
Okay, action items, we, we have two for you to...
Uh, let's see, prove to find an engineer for the methane system, uh, we're moving ahead with the kennel. That's really it. I'm going to update the firearms, firearms ordinance for the village district, and...
Ask about the mower?
Ask about the mower, yeah, we're going to have an answer for the mower for the next meeting. Oh, and going back to water, we'll be, we're talking about new estimates for the open trenching, because we'll be having a water board before the next meeting also. Oh, which is all the way out in September.
So, we're, that will be, the September 7th meeting will be Water Board and Select Ward, okay.
Uh, don't be surprised if you're here and tell me to have a special meeting before then.
Okay.
Because we might have to make a decision before that, that's like three weeks out, so, okay.
All right.
So, that's the action items.
Yeah.
No other business?
Nope.
Adern?
Motion to adjourn?
Mike?
Second.
Second by Tony. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? So carried, five.
Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.